Alright, so at this time we're going right into the board meeting. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by identifying in retrospect as well as posting notices the Borough Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryfold School, Alliance Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. We already did the pledge today, so we will head on into roll call for the regular meeting, please.
Ms. Beebe?
Here.
Mr. Buckton?
President.
Ms. Davidson?
Here.
Ms. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Torrell?
Here.
Ms. Golding?
Here. Well, Ms. Ms. DeRis.
Oh, sorry, Ms. DeRis.
Ms. DeRis at work. Also present, Mark Iannucci Superintendent, Sean McCarron School Business Administrator, Board Secretary, Jay Yezzi Principal of Bingham and Downing Schools, Steve Peely Principal, Maryfold School, James Winkelsbeck Vice Principal of Maryfold School, Lori Hines Child Study Team Supervisor, Butch Brunner Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes for June 18th and July 23rd.
There's one correction on the minutes for the June 18th regular session. I have Samantha Spalding as being present, and that should have been Mark's absent.
On the June 18th?
The June 18th regular.
Like it said.
Mark's absent on executive hour.
Okay.
But on the regular, I have Mark as present, so that'd be the one change.
Any other questions about those minutes? Roll call.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes, on all abstain from July 23rd.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Ferry?
Abstain from June, yes for July.
Ms. Panzarella?
Okay, I have to abstain from the June 18th work session. Yes to June 18th regular meeting, yes to June 18th executive session, and I have to abstain from July 23rd.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Torrell?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Did you call my name?
Yes.
I'm sorry. June 18th abstain on all three, July 23rd, yes. At this time, we need a motion to approve the financial report dated August 25th.
I make.
I'll make a motion. Motion made by Patty Smith?
I second it.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions there? Roll call.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Torrell?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes. There's no presentations. We took care of them at the retreat. Correspondence, no. At this time, we would like to recognize public on any comments on agenda items only. At this time, is there any public questions or comments on agenda items only? No? Okay. Secretary's report is blank there.
It's for June and July. It's a double month.
Okay. June and July. You got it. Do you have anything to add?
Within the business office, we've been doing a lot of things to try to make sure that the rollover from the 1314 to 1415 year was smooth. Make sure that all retro pays, which were done at the end of June prior to teachers leaving. Make sure that all new salaries and guys were in place for July 1 and also for the September 1 start date. So we're just in the process now of, one thing that we just finished was our audit in the business office. Last year, that did not take place until October. So the fact that we were able to do it as early as we have because we're up to date with everything at this point is an extreme positive. And then also closing out of all the grants and making sure that all of our grants are set up for the 1415 year.
Great. Superintendent's report?
Alright, I will read everything off my report, but you know, one of the things we could ask this summer, what you do as an administrator, people think, I think you just come in and, you know, close your eyes and take a nap. But I do want to thank all the summer staff that's worked very hard this year to get the school buildings ready. We can't believe it's already the end of August, we're ready to go, but that's what happens in summer. So we have, we have met on a consistent basis, I'd say, I'd say weekly, but that's probably lying, because it's probably about three times a week we're meet as administrative team to discuss things moving forward. You saw all the presentations today with goals and things like that being set up. We got thrown a couple curveballs in about the last week, the 10 days with staffing issues that came up. Couple resignations, some new hires we had to do. That was a lot of scrambling around, but it's good when you network with people that you know. You can pick up the phone and say, hey, we have a sudden job opening. Do you know of anybody who might be interested, or you know, you call local colleges, universities, look for anybody you could. We're able to fill all those positions, so we don't have any holes come September 2nd. So I want to thank the administrators for doing that as well. Want to thank Mr. Brunner and his staff. Some of the things we purchased over the last year were utilized this summer. To make the buildings and grounds and the facilities look great. They've worked very hard doing that, and they're still working right now, Mr. Brunner.
Yeah.
So we do want to thank you for that. I was able to attend a little bit of professional development this year with some fellow superintendents. Kind of summer was kind of slow in that regard, so we'll pick that back up in September. Working with Dr. McCarron and technology regarding Chromebooks. Have those cranked out come September 1. And then, you know, getting some other things. New Jersey ASPer and other reports that needed to be, you know, looked at and seen. And then the professional development calendar, all the principals and supervisors did a nice job of laying everything out for the year. Where I thought sometimes in the past, you're just filling it from month to month, oh, we have professional development next week, what are we doing? That's already prepared for the year. Also with building principals, they've given me schedules of all their events, for the most part, for the year. You know, when parent events are, back to school nights, dances. So that's been great. And that's been all this, we'll have that information out of the calendars if we can. And then obviously working technology, it's been a big, you know, undertaking with the park coming up, hopefully get ready for that. And then the child study team, work on Mrs. Hines to see how we can move forward in that area and make sure we can, you know, services, kids need, you know, unique opportunities for them in services. And she's been doing a good job, like first staff comes in this summer to work with our kids and get them tested. It's been a fun, productive summer, and I want to thank the board because I love this job. I love coming to work every day because you work with two people, you know, not only on the school board, but you know, you work with great people on a day-to-day basis. That's our summer so far. So if there's any questions, Ms. Torrell?
Under your curriculum, your cyberbullying workshops are scheduled for September. Is that for students, staff, and parents, or just?
We agree for students at this point. Ideally, we'd be offering it to parents as well in the evening. One thing that ties in with technology with doing the Chromebook initiative, and ideally we sending them home. We want to make sure that we're providing students and parents with as much knowledge as possible as far as prevention and things to be proactive, and that as a district, we're offering that.
So you are offering workshops for the parents as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Is that with September 9?
Ideally, September 9. I'm still waiting for a confirmation on that time and date. I'm waiting to hear back from Runnymede Police Department.
It's really important to get those things out to the people.
Sure.
You know, because I think sometimes our parent events and things like that, and this is an important one, aren't seen by enough parents. We can tie in, you know, some incentives. And childcare, sometimes an issue of working with PTA and bachelor babysitting and things like that. I think even this, you can bring your children, you can watch it with the parents.
Some districts will even do where they'll have like coloring tables set up, where they'll have the computers available with certain games and things like that that the students can do during that time. So looking at different options for this year. As I spoke to a couple board members earlier, the Chromebooks, we do want to get them out as quickly as we can. However, as of right now, there is a possible date of October 30th for the last order to arrive. They were placed in early July, however, I guess there's been a high demand since Dell started producing Chromebooks themselves. We were kind of on that bandwagon prior to anyone else, so we were able to get them in quickly. So as of right now, we have sixth and seventh grade Chromebook devices ready. And then as soon as the other ones come in, it'll probably take about a day or two to turn around and to set up before we're able to deploy them to everyone.
Yeah, also on your professional development calendar, what does GCN, some part of GCN training?
Compliance Network, that's when you get all your training, bloodwork pathogens, sexual harassment.
Oh, compliance, compliance.
Is that online?
Yes.
Oh, that's a lot of fun.
It's very exciting. I will say, one thing, we talked about this for the last year now. The food service program is basically kind of an overhaul now with Black, Black Horse Pike for.
Full circle, maybe full circle?
Yes. Parents now have access to real time.
We're in the final stages.
Which we postponed that last year.
Do you remember, we postponed that last year?
Yes.
I just saw that.
Now we are using.
I know, I'm just saying.
We're starting all fresh. Lunch tickets and lunch tickets. You know, Dr. McCarron, we talked about the vending machines this morning. They've already been a success outside of the building here. I guess kids in the neighborhood, adults, you know, riding their bike, they can get a cold drink. So that's working out well, but the food service program has been overall, Ruby's done a great job. I'm sure there'll be some growing pains with that. We're trying to identify any areas of concern there. So it's going to be, I think it's going to be fine. I'm not.
Lunch menu was posted last week. Lunch applications are available online. Parents will also be receiving all the information at home on the first day.
Now, how the lunch tickets changed, so there are more?
Lunch tickets are going to be on a monthly basis instead of on a weekly basis to try to get as much information as early as possible. And that way, parents will be able to look at the lunch menu when they get it along with the lunch ticket. Plan out what they're going to be, instead of students having three options, they now have five options this upcoming year. Because there's going to be four choices that are always going to be every day. And then there will be one meal choice that's different every day as well. And then also, instead of going with Domino's, that's a lot of information. We will be going with Papa John's because of a price difference.
Well, how, what is this? It looks like this. Can we get rid of all of them? They're late here.
No, no, no. If you go on the main page. Just go to runnymedeschools.org.
That's where I go when I was.
Home.
Gotcha.
And then all this.
Can we get rid of the mother ones when we go on the quick line?
Yes, I can get rid of those.
See, yeah, that's all late here, so just, can we delete that?
Absolutely.
Alright, sorry, I was just playing with my iPad while.
I'll be done in a minute.
Right after that, on these monthly meals, like it's, is the menu reversible?
To what?
To parents who order lunches for their children, do they have to?
They can still update it weekly, so you would have to update it too.
I don't have, I've seen them.
My reason for asking that is because not everyone can afford an entire month's worth of school lunches at one time.
Which is fine, but it's just putting in the order, so if you know when your child's in order, you don't necessarily have to pay for it. On the front, it's simply just putting in the order so we can have an idea of numbers.
Gotcha. Logistically, we're at the, I mean, I'm just looking from a first parent's perspective, so I'm not going to spike eight for this week's lunch, but how?
Parents are actually, because we're moving over from lunchtime to real time for the lunch program. So now parents will only have one login only, and they will be able to see their child balance. They will be able to use a credit or debit card. There will be a very small convenience fee if they choose to use a credit or debit. But with no fee, they can do a check or cash as they did previously. But the issue now is, at the end of the year, once we started looking at food service, looking at balances and saying, how would these balances become as high as they did? And trying to figure out what we're going to do to make sure balances are paid. After, once students hit a certain dollar amount, I think we said $15, which would be five lunches. They will still be offered lunch, they just won't be offered a choice of lunches. Many school districts do a cheese sandwich. We aren't going that route. They're just going to have the choice of option number five, which was a peanut butter and jelly sandwich or?
Cereal.
Cereal.
Something.
So they're offered, and they still get charged for that, but at least hopefully that will make sure that they pay that amount. And we'll be working with the cafeteria workers to make sure that, you know, we don't want them to be the ones to say, you owe money. We want it to be, you know, a nice, oh, sweetie, here's your option, and you know, this is what you can have for today. Take this now home, but they will, there will be updates for parents so that way they're aware of their child balance and where they are.
Right. Now, just thinking back too, in your information collection cycles. Is there any family in this district who does not have computer access, is not online, cannot access your phone to be able to facilitate everything that we are doing?
Anyone. Anyone who's not online, all, everything will be going home paper copy on the very first day with students.
Okay, but do we have a way of disseminating that information? That we have certain families that do not have that?
We'll be sending home paper copies.
They will tell you.
Yeah, and we'll be sending home the paper copies. So we will have that.
Okay.
I have another question. Last year, we always had a lot of good salad options. And now it just says side salad, like now there's no, Ms. Kathy, do you know what I'm talking about? There's no protein in this salad for my son. It's just a side salad now?
I would have to ask specifically.
Because I can call Ruby Jewel.
Black Horse Pike, what is in the side salad specifically? Black Horse Pike will be the one that's creating the menu based on what we have. They do need to incorporate certain things within the menu, so there will be a protein, because that is a part of the lunch overall.
I'm just asking because like, say, I came up to, because I think this is great, because I could pay for the month if I wanted to. So I get a side salad, then one day, if I pick a side salad, his option on the side is a garden salad. Do you see that? Side salad, and then it'll be garden salad, so I don't, I don't get it.
It would be one of the choices that they have, so he would have other, that's just.
So he would get a garden salad, celery sticks, or a fruit cup?
He would have different options to choose from that. I can ask to be classified, because I think there'll be a question that's not.
That will be a question, because last year it would be like a spinach salad with chicken and cranberries would be one day. And another day would be buffalo chicken salad. He wouldn't eat that because he didn't like the buffalo, like, you know what I mean?
So what would the protein be within the salad?
Is there, is there a protein, or is it just a side salad? That's, that's my question.
Okay.
But I'll call because I'd like to fill this out beforehand, so that's all. Alright. Is there any other questions? Butch, we're still on reports. Do you want to give us a little brief update about what you did this summer? Look at how he's laughing at me.
Let's see. Above and beyond the normal clean, we've had some, had a new air conditioner installed into a room because of a child that needs it. I've personally been working hard all week, all summer on a inventory program. And I'm just putting finishing touches on it now, because in the past, it's just, things disappear. Not that they waste the own, and I don't know where they're going. So when I have the ordering process come up, it's either over order or under order, because I don't really know what we've used. Well, now that'll be, that's history. From this, this point on, we'll have to turnover that. You know, the new equipment that's come in has really helped us to get the outside looking fairly well, I think, and we're coming a long way. It's not where I want it yet, but I was talking to Charles earlier about that. Probably another season will be, you guys will be real proud of the place, all three of them. So a lot, a lot of outside work has been attention to. If anything, what's the specifics, just ask away and I'll.
No, no.
New equipment, meaning what? You say you.
Tractor.
Other tractor.
Tractor specifically. That's helped us move a lot of stuff around in the garage. Oh, by the way, the garage looks like a brand new compared to what it was.
I heard.
So we're doing well. I mean, it's got a lot of work coming. We have some good weather this summer, not out.
Yeah.
Really, I mean, it wasn't too hot, so we can keep on moving outside. Wasn't a lot of rain, and when it did rain, it was after hours most of the time, so it worked out perfect for us.
Good. Alright, thank you. Other reports will continue in September. Just so you know though, I guess for PTA though, there's a lot of dates here for things that will be going on. Not just, not, not just meetings, but other events that are scheduled there too, that you might want to take a look at. So under new business for property and transportation, I need a motion to approve items number one through six. We have used facilities, field trips, and transportation for our sports.
I'll make my motion. I second.
Motion made by Chad, seconded by Maria. Any questions? Alright, roll call.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Torrell?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items number one through 11.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion made by Patty Smith?
I'll second that.
Seconded by. Any questions? Extracurriculars, salary revisions, new hires.
Extracurricular band and chorus for fourth and fifth grade, we used money. It was a technology stipend before that we used to create that band and chorus for fourth and fifth grade. Ms. Kaufman is the K-25 music teacher, has experience in other district, working with some of those kids. And so allow us to have more kids involved in the band and chorus program for the fifth grade. Ms. Majer will pick up another second, back section of teaching music lessons. Ms. Kaufman can do what, excuse me, music class, where Ms. Kaufman can then do the lessons for the kids. Because I don't know if anybody came to the concerts the last couple of years, but for the fourth and fifth grade, we're really taking off in that program. And this is going to allow us to have more kids exposed to band and chorus and that's. And then it can also collaborate, not that Ms. Kaufman didn't help last year, but she collaborated with Ms. Majer for the concerts and and some of the other block trips that they do as well.
Any additional questions?
What is ATF, ATF, the coordinator, Kristy Kirsten?
Alcohol, tobacco.
Tobacco.
Of drugs, I think. I don't know what the term stands for. You accept it on the side.
Just by the trucks.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Basketball coach, not posted.
We only wanted to get to fall sports one day.
That's happened last year too.
Nothing has been, nothing has been finalized yet. That'll be finalized in September.
Okay. I am very happy to see assistant coaches.
Yes.
I just think it just helps.
Children have, they have, they're building a more instruction.
Just helps all realms of activity.
I did speak with the REA last week regarding test flight and scale. We talked about that, and they were fine with those numbers we came up with.
Good.
And those people would be slot on the appropriate.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
Ms. Torrell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Beebe? Motion passes.
And at this time, I'd also like to publicly wish Ms. Pat, Mrs. Pat Connel and Mrs. Rachel Simons good luck from the board, if you could dance that along, please. Under finance, we need a motion to approve items number one through 14.
I make a motion to approve items 1 through 14.
I'll second one.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Chad. We have professional development workshops, payment of bills, and review agreements.
Under number two, special workshops, whining out. I cannot attend the September 10th, I'll be up in New York. And Sean knows about.
We weren't thinking about.
Essentially crossed out. And I have a question on item number eight. Renewal contract with Pfeiffer Financial Services, provider of district employees with service regarding their financial needs. Is that something that we have to pay for, or they just come in and provide that service for our staff?
It's someone that provides a service for our staff, and should they choose to use Pfeiffer Financial, they can have deductions taken out from their paychecks for those services.
But do we have to pay this group to come in?
No, we do, we pay them.
When I saw a contract, I'm saying, is there a fee? Okay, that was the only question I had.
I have a couple of questions too.
Go ahead.
On a few of these, it just has tuition contract for educational services to students for 2014-15. Are there amounts that we already know? Do we know how much each is going cost, or?
The amount will vary based on the needs of the student, and then it also is based on the number of days that the student attends. And most of these situations, it's not where we have an option to choose from. It's really based on their individual IP that is written for them as far as what's the closest placement that we can have to students.
Okay, so there's no way as of, yeah, how much this is going cost then?
No, that becomes, that will then come in the monthly bills list to, you know, Brook Lawn or or all those other programs, King's Way, we'll be able to, so on the monthly bills list when we see that. And you might see a difference in the amount, because I had a question of that when I first started signing off on things. And that a lot of times, it can be based on attendance or as students come and go. And in some cases, we never even really see the student in Runnymede. If there's a transfer between one district to another, sometimes a student might not even move. They stay exactly where they're located, but the parent relocates. That puts them under our responsibility.
And number 14, does all occasions limousine service?
They provide to six other districts in the surrounding area. They do have vans and a small bus. Three minigangs, a two 14 passenger. This would be another option. It would probably, instead of us having to possibly go out to cab companies as we've done in the past, depending on the number of students we have, and I mean, Lori knows from her end, with homeless situations with placements, we have busing situations change sometimes from day to day. Sometimes by the, by from morning to afternoon, there, there's a change in the placement. And we found that, you know, it might just be another option of who we can reach out to. When Camden County Special Services wasn't able to help us, we reached out to Gloucester County Special Services, and they had different bus companies that they used. And in some cases, they were able to, you know, assist in that area as well.
This is a pretty.
It would be a pretty rate, and well, they would have to give us.
Do you know what that rate is?
Well, it would vary based on the route.
Oh, I see.
So if they're going down the street, it might be nothing, if they're going all the way to, you know, violently, it'd be a very. I think. CJ's is one of our normal ones that we use, but sometimes we're out there so specific. And the number of students is important. And there's times where we'll be told. Because we go for quotes, and there'll be times where they'll say, we can offer you a, they won't even give us a quote on it. They just won't even touch it, so.
Any other questions? Roll call. I'm sorry, Maria, were you done?
Yeah, I was talking to the.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Torrell?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Ferry? Everyone stand away from the stage.
Alright, under curriculum, I need a motion to approve item number one.
Two.
And two.
I'll approve number one and number two. I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Patty, seconded by Lynn. Whereas the Runnymede Board of Education will share the same principle, Mrs. Jay Yezzi as principal of both Bingham Pre-K 3 and Downing Elementary K-3 in interest of efficiency. Whereas the teacher in charge will be Mary Rolson at Grace Downing School and Barbara Fans at the Alliance Bingham School. Resolution 082514. Therefore, be it resolved that Mrs. Yezzi will be assigned to principal of the Alliance Bingham and Grace Downing Elementary Schools for the 2014-2015 school year. Roll call.
Mr. Buckton?
Yes.
Ms. Ferry?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella?
Yes.
Ms. Torrell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under policy and public relations, we have quite a few policies for the first reading. We're going to approve items number one, and we're going to add number two for the board member handbook. I'd like to personally thank all the board members who worked so hard on getting that handbook together for us. We greatly appreciate it. So we need items number one and two.
Make motion to approve items number one and two under policies and public relations.
Motion made by Naomi.
I'll second.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions?
We'll start having the policies up through the new piece on our website, Extrastasment. You can go with the new policy information, it's specific to now, you have these public access mothers.
And question I have, we're also going to have that, so you can just pull up those scripts.
Correct.
And read.
For the purpose of the meeting, as you're looking at the policies, unless they're completely brand new, what we did was we posted what changes were being made to the policy from their original. If you click on the link, it's just the statement from Extrastasment, I think it's six pages, that goes over each policy and what changes are included.
All of these are going to be like. Well, all of these are mandatory anyway, correct? And there were really no options on any of the mandatory services, kind of cut and drawn for this round, but it doesn't always happen that way.
Yeah. And we'll have monthly ones where we...